Great, welcome everyone to the Tuesday, January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Tumwater City Council Work Session. All of the council members are present. So we have quite a few items on the agenda this evening, so the very first item will be done by Brad Medrude, which is the two thousand and twenty-five Long Range Planning Work Program, so go ahead, Brad.
Alright, good evening, council members and mayor. The action that we're asking the council take tonight is to review and discuss the draft twenty-five work program and schedule that for approval on the January twenty-first consent calendar next week before the council. First of all, I wanted to follow up with all of you on any thoughts or any changes or any questions that you may have had on the update discussion that we had at the last joint work session on December tenth. I also want to let you know that at the following morning, the General Government Committee members met and we discussed some of the issues that had come up at that meeting involving the the urban forestry amendments and whether or not they should be on the twenty-five agenda or not. Based on that discussion, we have moved the tree preservation ordinance update into the twenty-five work program. It's replacing the review of the multifamily tax exemption program, which will probably need to occur in two thousand and twenty-six because that program will expire as of December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-six. So with that, that was the sole change that was made after the meeting. So again, if there are any questions, otherwise the staff is requesting that this be scheduled for your next consent count.
Councilmember Rollhouser.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to make just a brief comment because we did discuss this at General Government Committee and then at that meeting decided that we should also bring it back to a work session for us to all have a discussion about it. We thought that this made sense because the MFD doesn't expire until next year, so we do have time to work on that. And the tree thing has been in the queue for so long. It's that this is, you know, one component of the three potential components of the the ordinance, but this is also the one that I think has drawn the most interest from from council members as well as interest from the public. So it seems like prioritization of this made sense to us, but we also just wanted to have that here at a work session to also gather additional feedback to see if other people felt similarly or if they had concerns about that direction. So. Yeah.
Alright, any other comments? So it sounds like it the works at the nation about that. Alright, so are we ready to move it forward and put it on the consent agenda for our next council meeting? Alright, I see consensus was nodding, so that sounds great. Thank you, everyone. The next item is a service provider agreement with dispute resolution center for the tenant and landlord mediation project and conflict resolution. And Brad, are you doing that one too?
Yes. So again, thank you. The recommended action from the staff is that the council place the service provider agreement for the dispute resolution center on your January twenty-first consent calendar. The recommendation for the to approve and authorize mayor to sign. A little bit of background on these two different contracts that have been been held it, the city has been working with the dispute resolution center about the genesis of the tenant landlord mediation project came out of the development of the housing action plan in in two thousand and twenty-one. Based on a work session in two thousand and twenty-two, the council discussed potential actions that could be taken on a regional basis to address tenant protections. At the conclusion of that discussion, the council asked staff to prepare a scope for a contract with the dispute resolution center for tenant and landlord mediation project for further consideration. The council in turn approved that scope and the project started in two thousand and twenty-three. Excuse me, the original allocation for that project was fifty thousand dollars annually. In the fall of two thousand and twenty-four, as part of the human services program funding discussions, the council decided to move a second component of what we contract with the dispute resolution center for, which is the conflict resolution line into the same contract, given that out of the fifty thousand dollars have been allocated, we had probably spent no more than twenty thousand of that as of the date, so there was sufficient funding there to to cover that. Because that the original landlord mediation project service provider agreement has expired at the end of last year, we are have prepared a new service provider agreement that it combines again, those two different functions, the conflict resolution line and landlord mediation project in one contract. Based on the budget that was allocated by the council in December, the funding would look like this, the for the the conflict resolution line, there'd be five thousand dollars allocated on an annual basis for that. So ten thousand total. And then for the landlord mediation project, there'd be twenty thousand dollars allocated annually for a total of forty thousand. So the total contract would be fifty thousand over the course of the next two years. The number for twenty thousand on an annual basis was derived from the actual invoicing that we received and the number of mediation that the dispute resolution center had performed for the city of Tumwater. So it's a reduction based on actual usage. And if there are any questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
I see council member Dahlhoff has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Brad, overall, I really dig this concept and resource availability. The one question I have is, do you have any examples of success stories? Because the only touch points I have had are with two manufactured home parks and dispute resolution center said they were unable to assist. So I'm wondering, moving forward, what is accountability and what leverage do we have to to keep pushing, keep trying, keep trying to build a relationship? Because right now, the only examples I have are zero for two.
Yeah, I think what we have to do is is rely on on their performance over the next year or so and have an evaluation if the council desires at the end of this year to have a check-in point to say how are they doing? They provide the details, we can ask for additional information and so forth as part of that. But I think that's probably an appropriate request.
Thanks, Brad.
Debbie, I think you tried to say.
Yeah, you're right. I I didn't unmute myself. Councilmember Jefferson, did you have a question?
Um, yes, um, my question was in line with council member Dahlhoff. So this money is used for to clear up landlord tenant disagreements, for example. If I was having issues with my landlord, would I call them? Would I call the city? How does that work?
Uh, the there's two components. The first is the conflict resolution line, which is a separate service that that has been performed by the dispute resolution center, which is done, I think, if I recall correctly, it's a it's our contribution on a multiple jurisdiction contract. The specific one that deals with landlord tenant mediation project is for Tumwater residents. They would contact the dispute resolution center. The money that has been provided for by the city is offset to the cost of that. So it's really intended to encourage the use of the program by residents of the community. And then have that cost defrayed as part of this this process.
Okay, so just to keep people in their homes, right?
Yes, that again, the the original thinking again behind all the tenant protection discussions that the council has had is number one, we want to keep people housed in the housing that they have now. And that on in some cases needs, you know, additional help to resolve particular issues that may come up between a tenant and landlord. It's easier to deal with these kinds of issues than what happens if a if a tenant has to leave for a variety of reasons or is asked to leave or forced to. And then we're in an entirely different ballgame and it's entirely different cost and level of of pain and suffering is much greater. So I, for us, it makes a lot more sense to invest here to try to help people at this level rather than try to fix it afterwards.
Excellent. And then again, just to see some of those numbers would be nice next time.
Councilmember Swarthout.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the ability for our our tenants to be able to have this resource. One of what I when council member Dahlhoff talked about the the mobile home parks, though, I just I'm concerned about the it's a lot of the things that the people brought up are the rent increases and how does this process help? I can see why dispute resolution center wasn't able able to be able to help them at that because we're dealing with this this issue with you know, companies raising rates on the and then the other part too is that when I thought that one of Mobile Home Park was purchased by purchased, they they were supposed to notify the city and and that was the result of this last time. I was at Mobile Western States, the Western park or was purchased by, we weren't notified and then they started raising the rates. So how do how do we help with that? That's the part that how does this fund help? And where does that discussion go? How can we be helpful for our tenants? Or in our area that way?
So you you've asked some very easy to answer questions. I appreciate you saving those for last. The first first issue dealing with the rent increases, it will actually be an interesting discussion again at the state level. Michael, as they've introduced as one of the six hundred and thirty bills on the docket as of Friday, was the bill again dealing with capping rent increases to seven percent plus a whole host of notice requirements as part of that. So in dealing with those particular issues, there may be an avenue later this year for us to deal with that kind of issue. This, and I apologize, Councilmember Swarthout, I forgot the second question that you asked.
Um, I think the other part is that I thought there was a something that we had in an art ordinance or something that we had discussed about when in our mobile home protection, because we're one of the few jurisdictions that does protect and promote the mobile home or having these kinds of parks, that's as alternative housing. How do we, aren't they supposed to notify the city? Because we didn't realize that I think that the sale had gone to an out-of-state company and, you know, we're seeing the repercussions that these people are having to face now because of and not a local owner and now, you know, I'm raising the rates and things like that, so.
Okay, and I apologize. So the the first issue dealing with sale of a existing manufactured home park. The state hasn't acted in the past couple of years, notification requirements for the sale of that seventy days ahead of closing essentially that a park is for sale. It doesn't necessarily indicate who's buying their location and all that. That's a that's a state different process. It is something that however, that goes to not only us but to the folks who live at the at those parks to try to take action in that time. Based on our current level of experience dealing with this on the regional housing council side with some manufactured home parks in the county, unless we have existing funds immediately available, that's a very difficult thing to try to address. One side note is dealing with when they're dealing with rent increases and so forth. The manufactured home parks are considered under the same level protections the city has for the tenants that don't live in a manufactured home park. So the notification requirements, if somebody's asked to leave or if a rent increase occurs of a certain type, all of those times come into play. Obviously, based on our own discussions with members and residents of those communities, given that the probably they're paying a fairly low amount of rent in comparison to obviously what they're getting for in terms of social security or other benefits, the opportunities for them to move somewhere else are limited in the community. But those are the level protections that we currently have.
Councilmember Kathy.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. I had someone ask me. Does this go on their record? If they go for, you know, go to dispute resolution or, you know, go to the center or have to sign up, they were concerned about, you know. I I think they were thinking about what happens when you have an eviction or something, they're concerned about their records, so.
Yeah.
Or where where they can read, they read that or?
That's actually a really good question. I don't necessarily know the actual answer. I think in my my gut says essentially that this is not a court procedure, so it's not something that's officially recorded. We don't get a list of who and the names of the people who've gone through these kinds of services, there's confidentiality and all that kind of stuff that comes as part of that. So this is sort of the outside of the court, outside of the, it's on the official record side of things is is my inclination. If attorney Kirkpatrick sees it differently, I'm hoping she interrupts and says, no, that's not the case.
You are correct, and in fact, this is one method to help avoid having any kind of thing on your credit report.
So if someone asks me that, just say, no, there there's no record of this that would go against you.
That's correct.
Okay. Not a regular question, but it has been a question. Thank you.
Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Brad, that just reminded me what Councilmember Kathy was talking about is feedback from two manufactured home parks of retaliation. And how do we get dispute resolution to get both entities to get to yes? Right? And so also retaliation. So whatever that agreement in DRC is working, is there a retaliation clause or a blurb or verbiage or something like that? Because that also is a limiting factor of those wanting to engage because they feel like they're going to be retaliated against.
Yeah. And I think, again, I'm going to ask Karen if she has an opinion on this. My my understanding is that there's nothing in our service provider agreement that deals with retaliation as part of that process. I don't know if that's a civil matter between the tenant and the landlord about however, you know, that is dealt with. So I know that's the extent of my knowledge on that.
I don't believe it's covered in the in this agreement, but I do believe that we have something in our new code language that deals with retaliation. I I can't point you to the specific provision, but I believe that but there is language in there.
Thank you, Karen. That's just something for us to think about as we're developing this pilot and if it becomes something permanent, those elements and those maybe potentially unintended consequences that arise.
Councilmember Von Holtz.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this might this might go against what we're trying to accomplish here, but does the dispute resolution do, if we are having multiple interactions with like the same landlord, does that trigger something with dispute resolution where maybe the city and this landlord might have a I don't know.
I.
Like repeat offenders, you know.
Right.
There's nothing in the agreement with respect to that. I mean, this is really a voluntary program. It's a it's a resource for people to try and avoid things escalating. But but certainly those are all good questions as we implement our provisions in our code regarding landlord tenant.
Councilmember Rollhouser.
Thanks. I was gonna sort of reply to a couple of different comments, particularly in terms of like success stories. I think that there's a certain type of case that just inherently will be more successful with a model like this. Like what some of the ones that I've heard about from other jurisdictions that have tried things that are similar were like, one of the tenants who was renting a single family home or or standalone home, if we're not using that terminology anymore. A standalone home was having difficulty keeping their yard kept and the grass was really tall, which is a code violation with the city, right? If your grass grows above, it's either twelve or eighteen inches, I don't remember. But something like that, it eventually becomes a fire hazard. And that sort of developed into this rift between the landlord and the tenant and eventually, you know, a third party was needed to just sort of have those facilitation skills to have a calm discussion about like, well, what's preventing you from being able to maintain the lawn in a safe fashion? And it turned out that the person couldn't afford a lawnmower, so the the entity that was helping facilitate that like found a local, I think it was a scout troop that helped that person with mowing the lawn and they got a merit badge or whatever it's called these days for accomplishing that. So there's there's always, I think, going to be cases where like a landlord wants to raise the rent and a tenant can't afford that. And maybe that's not resolvable through this model. Like I don't, I don't think that there will be, we're never going to have a hundred percent hit rate with this. But I do think that it does have merit for for a number of cases where in particular like communications have grown caustic between one party and another. And you need that calm voice of reason to just sort of be able to sit people down and say, what's really going on here? And how can we find a solution that benefits everybody? So we we don't have a lot of those case examples to point to here yet, but I'm I'm hopeful that we will over the the next sort of implementation phase of this project.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Alright, so Brad, this will go on our next council meeting.
Yes, it will.
Alright. And now the next item is work, work the Thurston Regional Planning Council does that impacts the city of Tumwater and we have Mark Daly on. So, welcome, Mark.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate making the time on what is a very full agenda. This, I'm Mark Daly, I'm the Executive Director, Thurston Regional Planning Council. And it's been, it's been a little while since I've been here and this will be a a bit of a different presentation. Usually I come and I'm I'm talking about a specific project or program. Our council has asked that that I make it out to the jurisdictions councils at least once a year to just kind of give a a snapshot of of a lot of the things that we have going on that impacts each of our members. And there is a lot of regional work going on right now. And so I'm, what I'm going to do is just kind of go over some of the highlights specific to Tumwater. Anytime you want any more information on this, I would be more than happy to come back. So this is a little bit of an overview and a teaser. So I'm going to share my screen. Okay, alright. So just because it's been a little bit of of time, very quick reminder of just kind of who Thurston Regional Planning Council is and what some of our key work is. So a lot of people think that TRPC is a a part of Thurston County. We're not, we're a separate entity. We've been around for over fifty-five years in our region now. And we're a voluntary organization where the cities and towns, the county, tribal nations, school districts, all our special purpose districts come together to plan around one one table on issues that cross those jurisdictional boundaries. And some of the the big pieces of what we do, there is funding that comes to our region through TRPC, federal funding for transportation projects. And so we are our Transportation Policy Board, which council member Agabi represents Tumwater and our council, which council member Swarthout represents Tumwater, makes decisions on where those federal fund, federal funds should go locally. And we just finished in December, actually our largest call for projects to date. We programmed out almost twenty million dollars in local transportation projects. And actually, Tumwater did did quite well in that. They received the largest single project funding in this call for projects, which was almost two point six million for the next phase of the Dischutes Valley Trail for construction. And that transportation is kind of one of our our main areas of focus, but also land use, growth management, environmental planning efforts. And so we tend to work on those things again that cross those jurisdictional boundaries. And then we are a clearinghouse for tons of excellent data about our area. If there is one thing people take from this, if you go to trpc.org, you click on the profile, there are over seventy different topics that we have, all kinds of data specific to our county and specific to individual jurisdictions around population, employment, housing, environment, all kinds of different areas. Okay, so now a little bit about some of the work that we have going on. Some of this will be very familiar to you. Like this piece. We've, we've been doing work to support the comprehensive plan updates. And so we've been working with all the jurisdictions on the new requirements around housing need. Coming up with the the methodology for our region and doing the work to allocate where those, the housing need over the next twenty years at different income brackets, where does that need to go? And then also looking at land capacity and do we have adequate space in our cities and their urban growth areas to accommodate that that housing need? What we've, we found for Tumwater is that there is adequate capacity to to accommodate that housing need. But it it's close, it's close for all our jurisdictions. The the housing need, as as you all know, is is great for our region as it is for across the state. And when all the jurisdictions are finishing up their comp plan updates near the end of two thousand and twenty-five, we're also going to be scoping out an update to the countywide planning policies. This has been something that that we've been wanting to do for for a little while now. It's been about almost ten years since we had a major update to our countywide planning policies. And there have been quite a bit of changes to the Growth Management Act. And so after everyone gets out from under the comp plan updates, we'll be looking to work on that next. We also just are about to start work on a couple of small agreements for the city. Kind of related to the same, the same work of land capacity. We'll be looking at every, every ten years before comp plan updates are done, we need to do a buildable lands analysis and TRPC does that for our region. Where we look at the projected growth over the next twenty years and determine whether our our county as a whole has enough capacity for the residential, commercial, industrial development that we expect to see. And so we'll be taking that work that was done for two thousand and twenty-one to support the updates that are going on now. And Tumwater will provide us with some of the assumptions and some of what is being considered in the Bush Prairie Habitat Conservation Plan. And we'll be looking at how that how how that affects that land capacity and that land availability for the city of Tumwater. And another piece of work, another small contract, will be taking a look at three land use scenarios. So we project out twenty and twenty to twenty-five years of growth and we have a model that kind of supports those assumptions. And what we'll be doing with this work is Tumwater will provide us with some different density assumptions and then we'll model out how what that looks like over the next twenty years in terms of is there, is there adequate space for the growth that we expect in the area? And how do different density assumptions impact that? Also on the comp plan, this is a piece that whereas as each jurisdiction is finishing their comp plan, it is required by state law that organizations like their comp plan, uh, it is required by state law that organizations like ours, we, one of the hats that we wear is we are designated by the, under the Growth Management Act as the Regional Transportation Planning Organization, RTPO, uh, for the Thurston region. And we are required to review comp plan updates and certify that they are consistent with our regional transportation plan. And so, uh, our staff have been working with jurisdiction staff and WashDOT on, um, methodology for doing that, that consistency review. And we've developed a checklist with, uh, 14 different criteria. And we actually had, had an early test of that. Olympia's taken a approach where they're trying to do, kind of do element by element. So they've already, uh, finished a draft of their transportation element. And we kind of use the checklist to take them through a, a preliminary, uh, check of consistency. Checklist worked pretty well and, and their element was consistent. Um, and so as Tumwater starts getting closer to having that, um, uh, transportation element of the comp plan updated, this is a, a process we will need to do to go through that consistency review. And Brad and Mike are, are well aware of that. Brad's been involved in helping to develop those criteria that we're using for the checklist. Stormwater retrofit strategy. This is a cool piece of work that is a partnership among, uh, Tumwater, Olympia, Lacey, Thurston County, TRPC and, uh, Department of Ecology. Uh, we received an EPA grant, Environmental Protection Agency, federal grant to do this work where we're creating a, a toolkit for prioritizing parts of the stormwater, uh, facilities, um, for retrofit to improve how well those facilities treat the stormwater for, to improve water quality, to the receiving waters, for salmon habitat and for ecosystem function. And, uh, we are, have the contractor on board for this and this work is, is kind of well underway and will be taking place over the, over the remainder of 2025 and into 2026. And the end result, we're going to have a, we're going to, one of it, part of it will be a literature review where we'll outline best practices in terms of, um, policies and procedures to support retrofit of stormwater facilities. And then a, a strategy, including priority, priority projects in the region and, um, uh, who, who's responsible, how much are they, do they cost, kind of starting that, 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 um, work program of stormwater retrofits for our area. And actually I'm, starting is the wrong word because all the jurisdictions are well underway. What you're looking at here is actually, uh, Somerset Hill Drive, uh, Tumwater Project. So this is the type of retrofit, um, that we're, that we're talking about to improve the treatment of stormwater. So, um, we've got a contractor on board. You'll start seeing more results from this later in 2025 as we start getting some of the, the work back from the contractor. High-capacity transportation. This has been, this is probably one of the subjects I get asked about the most, which is when, when are we going to have trains coming to Olympia? Um, and, uh, we have had, um, a lot of discussion about this. We, TRPC put some money towards it. The state legislature put some money towards work where we looked at what are the opportunities to enhance our express bus service, our van pools? And what is the feasibility of light rail service and commuter rail service to this area? And what the work found is that, um, even over the next 25 years, the density for our metro area is, is still going to be on the light side of what it takes to support commuter rail. And it's still will be pretty far away from what it takes to support light rail. And so what we've been focusing on is how can we improve and enhance that and get the most out of, uh, the express bus service and van pools that, that we have and can, can increase. Um, and a tangible example of that is we've been working on I-5 for quite some time, um, looking at the performance of I-5. And, um, most of you probably, probably know the issue around the Nisqually Delta where I-5 is, um, causing a, some serious flood risks, some serious habitat degradation, and it doesn't function as well as we need it to from a transportation perspective. And so we've been, um, making sure that the legislature and the governor's office knows that as we work on, uh, potentially replacing that bridge, well, not potentially, we need to replace the bridges across the Nisqually Delta on I-5. Um, and when we do so, we should be looking at including, um, high occupancy vehicle lane and potentially, um, uh, transit only, uh, transit and van pool only use of the right shoulder of I-5. That's the kind of thing that would give the competitive advantage that our express bus service and van pools don't currently have because they're just in the same traffic as everybody else. Um, that would make that a much more reliable, viable option for people to use to get north because that's been the focus of this is getting people to Pierce and King County. And one of the drivers for this is the commuter rail sound, the sounder is scheduled to get to DuPont in 2045. And so part of this is how are we going to connect? I know that's still a ways out, Councilmember Althozer, but, but that's when, that's when it's slated. Um, and, and that date has moved a couple of different times. So it, it could again, but still, how can we connect up to that, um, when it is ready? Knowing that, um, getting a different train other than the current Amtrak Cascades, getting new tracks over in the Nisqually Delta will be incredibly e- expensive. We've been doing-
Good question about-
Oh, yeah. Anytime.
Um, this, it might not count as, as high-capacity transportation, but I remember a couple of years ago, I think there was funding in the state transportation budget to study a foot ferry from our region up to Seattle. Is that-
Yeah. Good, good, great question. Yep. Um, and we worked with Puget Sound Regional Council. They were the ones, uh, that were tasked with, with doing that work because it was, it was a kind of a Puget Sound wide look at passenger ferry service. And, uh, what, what they found for our area is that from the Tacoma Narrows down, because of the narrow waterways and the erosion potential, they, they, they would have to go so slow from the narrows down to our area, um, and then back up that it actually is, would take considerably longer than driving. And, and, and that was part of the, the premise of this story of this study was, um, looking for areas where passenger ferry service could do a better job of moving people than, than the roadway. And so it, that, that isn't the case for our area at this point. Um, I will just mention briefly because there've been, there's been a lot of interest in that. Um, in Europe, they're starting to use, um, passenger ferries that, that use that foil technology. Um, and, and so the, the, the hole is actually out of the water. Um, so it doesn't have the wake issue. Those, those don't have the wake issues with speed that we have with traditional boats. And that was the assumption. So I just say that to say technology may change, um, that, that equation, but at least for now, um, because of the limited speeds south of Tacoma Narrows, it doesn't, it doesn't work for our area.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. And just stop me anytime. Um, another piece of work we've got going on right now is about, um, emergency detour routes. Uh, TRPC and all our jurisdictions, WashDOT, State Patrol, a couple of years ago, we did some work on, uh, to update all of our detour routes. And there are about 50 identified for our area. And what this piece of work is doing is taking a look at different scenarios of closure and using the transportation model that TRPC has developed. Um, where, when we have a closure at different areas, what happens? How do, how, how do different areas perform? And what you're looking at here, this is the, one of the, um, closures that we looked at, potential closures that it would impact Tumwater a great deal. And that is, uh, looking at what happens if we have some incident that closes I-5 at 101. And what these red circles are, are areas actually off of the highway system, even though a lot of these look like they're on it, it's just because the circle's really big, um, uh, that would, um, have great delays, um, it, when there is a closure. And so this was the first step is just where are the areas in the system where we have particularly troubled function when we have a closure? And then the next step of this, we're going to, um, put out an RFP for a contractor to do some operational analyses and try and identify ways that we, at, at these locations where we could maybe operate the system differently. Are there any sort of infrastructure, you know, roadway improvements that we could make that would make them function better, um, on a daily basis? But also when they, being used as a detour route to try and address these areas where the system just breaks down when we have a closure. And obviously no amount of operational or small infrastructure, um, uh, changes are going to make this go away, but there are definitely things we can do to make it function better when we're using these areas as detours. And so this is work that also, um, will, will be kind of extended, go into 2026 before we're complete. So we're still fairly early on in some of this work. Regional Safety Action Plan. This is another one that will be kicking off soon. Um, we received federal funding, a, a funding program called Safe Streets For All, uh, to, to develop a regional safety action plan. Safety is a huge emphasis for our region, for our state. Um, it's been pretty widely publicized that, uh, especially when it comes to fatal and serious injury accidents, the, the trends are in the wrong direction. Um, they're going up and especially in relation to pedestrian and bicycle, uh, incidents with vehicles. And so we want to get a handle on, on that. And so this is work that we'll be kicking off a little later in 2025 where we'll be looking at those areas of particular, where we see repeated safety issues and, uh, figuring out strategies to try and reduce those safety issues in these areas. Um, some of the big ones, not surprising in our area, obviously there's the, the kind of crossing traffic incidents that happen in, in, um, more urban areas. But we see quite a bit on our, on our more rural roadways with higher speeds, uh, also a big i- issue. So, um, Lacey and Thurston County, they also, a year earlier, they went for the same funding. So they're about a year ahead in doing plans specific to their area. So we're going to take that work that, that Lacey and Thurston County are already doing and build from that for the rest of the Thurston County region. Then just some other things to be aware of. We are in the middle now of a update of our regional transportation plan. That's, uh, Thurston Regional Planning Council's kind of foundational document. Um, we update it every five years. Uh, we are scheduled to complete that update in July. Um, we expect to have a draft out in April and we've been working closely with the jurisdictions every step of the way on this, this update process. Um, Regional Trails Plan, that it was, has been a high priority for both our policy board and council. And we completed that last year. It had a number of kind of ongoing action that, um, TRPC was tasked with doing. And we've been looking for the funding to do that. We received funding through the call for projects that I just mentioned, um, for 2028 to 2032. We want to get this work going a lot sooner than that. So we are actively looking at where else can we find funding? Are there, are there, are there parts of our work that we could kind of move around to make room to get some of this implementation work going? Um, because it, it, the implementation called for is the kind of coordination on upkeep and safety and lighting that, um, were big issues that came up as we were doing the regional trails plan. Mentioned Martin Way Corridor, just, it's been a big piece of work. It's a huge roadway for our whole region. And we've been doing the kind of corridor strategy that we worked on, uh, for Capital Way through both Tumwater and, and Olympia, um, the brewery district when we did that back in the early 2010s. This is that same kind of work of looking at that main corridor and, um, of coming up with kind of a vision for how do we want, uh, Martin Way to function? And then how can transportation improvements help to make that vision come to pass? Um, first part of that, after we did the study, a huge part of that was pedestrian crossings. When you go down Martin Way, there are large stretches where there is not a crosswalk. Um, and that has been a big issue for safety. So, uh, we're working now with Olympia, Lacey, Thurston County, intercity transit to, to, um, plan for up to 10 additional pedestrian crossings across Martin Way. And then late in 2025, we will start our bicycle connectivity strategy. This, this will take a look at, uh, when we look at what Tumwater has and what Olympia has and Lacey has in the county, where are there gaps in our, um, bicycle network? And where are there issues, uh, especially of safety in our bicycle, our bicycle network? And what can we do to make that, uh, to make transportation by bike a safer, um, more reliable, more viable option for people are getting around our region? So that's, that's work that'll kick off this year, but most of that'll be in, in '26. So that is just a snapshot of a lot of the work that we've got going on right now. Like I said, I, anytime you want more detail on any of this, I would love to come back. But, um, I'm really glad to get the opportunity just to kind of make you aware of some of the work that your staff is, are helping us work together on and that we're doing for our region over the next year, year plus. So that's what I have for you. Thank you.
All right. Any questions? And Councilwoman R. Swarthout, uh, sits on that and Peter, uh, Councilmember Agabi sits on the Transportation Benefit District.
Policy Board.
Policy Board.
Policy Board.
Too many, too many. Darby Transportation, who knows what path you could go down. Uh, yeah. So, um, great work, a lot of work. Uh, Councilmember Althozer.
Yeah, thanks. Um, first, Mark, I just want to compliment you on the shade of blue for your background.
Tumwater blue.
Uh, and, and thanks for your presentation. This is really great information to have. I think I'm, I'm really excited to hear about, um, aspirations for the regional trails plan and trying to implement that sooner. When, whenever we do a community survey here, you know, trails is almost always at the top of the list. Pool is up there too, but, but trails is typically number one or number two. That's definitely, um, at the forefront for our constituents' minds, I think. Uh, so thanks for, for sharing this information. This was-
Absolutely.
Uh, Councilwoman R. Swarthout.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mark, for the presentation. I really do enjoy, um, serving Tumwater, um, on the, uh, Thurston Regional Planning Council. You learn so much and there's just, it's a wide variety of topics that you get a chance to dive into and, and Mark's leadership, just, it's just such an easy, easy committee to serve on because you feel well-prepared and, uh, and to be able to make these kinds of decisions that we do and, and knowing that, um, we have our staff that are helping too. I just appreciate the work that's being done and being part of your, part of the council, Mark. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate it.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. And if we do have questions, we'll definitely reach out and-
Anytime.
That sounds great.
All right. I'm going to- All right. I'm going to stick around for your next item.
All right. Sounds great. All right. So the next item is the Transportation Benefit District Solution. And Brandon, you've got this.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor Sullivan and council members. So I am here to discuss the trans, discussion of the Transportation Benefit District. Specifically tonight, I think the main reason I'm here is to talk about the resolution that we're going to bring forward next week. But before I, before I go over that, I'm just going to go over some of the details that we did last week. In addition to some more information, largely based on questions that have come from some of y'all. So I got three main areas I'm going to cover. It's the resolution itself. There is a change in project eligibility that we would like to move forward with. And, and I'll touch on that later. And then also I'll touch on the why, which I'm definitely attributing to Councilmember Jefferson this time. Cause she hit me hard on it in the first meeting and I appreciate it. So with that, I'll just jump into the presentation. I should probably share my slideshow too, huh? It's been so long since I did this from home. I forgot how to. All right. So starting with the TBD facts. I'm actually not even going to mention these because it's a long list. I went over them all in detail last week. So it's wash, rinse, repeat. But if you have any questions, I might come back to this slide. Otherwise, anything, anything that's here, I did talk about last week. Okay. So the Tumwater TBD was originally established by city council. And that was in 2014. And 2015 is when the sales tax funding option was approved by the voters. It honestly, this program has added a tremendous amount of funding for our streets. As you can see on the screen today, it is in excess of 19.2 million dollars in TBD funding alone. And then we've been able to use those funds to leverage grants. And so in that, in that chart, you see the, the blue grants or the blue bars are what we have collected in the 0.2% sales tax for the TBD. And then the orange bars are grants that we have received using TBD dollars as local match. So when you add in the grants with TBD and the grants were in excess of $25 million over 10 years. And, and that is going to go up a little bit before the election, probably going to hit the $20 million mark. Before the current 10-year sales tax for the TBD ends. I am, so I'm actually going to show sort of a silly graphic that I put together. Ultimately, it's just about sort of depicting what our pavement condition does depending on the funding that we have. And so hopefully it's doing the little thingy on your screen there. But so prior to 2015, prior to the TBD. Our road conditions were falling pretty fast. In fact, I, I think we more than likely had the worst or the second worst pavement, overall system pavement condition. Amongst the, the three agencies here in, in the core and, and the county. So that, that's what's represented by the red line. We are falling, our pavement condition is falling. And then after we started to collect some TBD funding, we get to the orange line. Where it starts to be a little bit more manageable, where we're not falling nearly as fast. And then here, because we collected, we, or we were awarded a very large pavement maintenance grants for the National Highway System Grant. So it did some of the significant work on Tumwater Boulevard, Capital Boulevard. And, and what are called National Highway System Routes. And that's when we really started to get to where we're looking good. Because even though the overall pavement condition for the city was still dropping. That's pretty normal. The reason is, is that even as we go through and we took care of some of the biggest problems in the city. What's happening is, is all the good streets in the city that we're not touching are all slowly degrading. So even though, you know, in the beginning stages of the TBD, things were looking awesome. We're taking care of all the biggest problems. Our network seems like it's getting better than ever. It was actually still getting worse. It's just things were leveling out and the good streets were slowly getting worse and the bad streets were instantly getting better. Sales tax revenue for the TBD continued to grow rapidly. 2020, it was, at the time, it was an insane amount to be collected. And that's really, we, we still had some grant funding. That's really when we started to do what it's hard to do. And that is our overall pavement condition started to get better here. And then we also received a significant amount of grant funding in 2023. Right now, because we've lost the funding, we are slowly going back towards what's, what's not great. But that also has to do with the fact that we did not complete a pavement maintenance project last year. We do plan on a pretty large pavement maintenance project this, this summer. So I don't think that it's going to fall quite there. And Ms. Councilmember Althouser, I'll just say one thing before I jump to you. This red one, red line here just depicts, depicts ultimately what would happen if. If renewal of the TBD sales tax did not happen, we'd be back to where we were in the, in the beginning and. Right to you.
Thanks. I appreciate the, the scientific graphics of the emojis. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Do, so for the grants that we received, particularly in 2018 and 2023. Those were dependent upon local match, correct?
That is correct.
Like we would not have been able to receive those. Realistically, if we didn't have this as a revenue source, we wouldn't have been able to dedicate that much. Independent funding to receive a match along those lines probably, or at least doing so would have been incredibly difficult to pencil.
That, that is 100% true. Our, our prior pavement maintenance program, the annual allotment was under $200,000. So we would do no projects for several years and then put out what on today's scale of what we do is, is a very small project. So there's no way we would have had the funding to get those grants.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Let's see where I was here. Okay. I'll just go to the next slide. So here is, well, promises made, promises kept is, is obviously a mantra that we've had as a city for a long time. And it is what we used with the TBD as well, when we first went out to the voters. The overall scope or eligible projects for the original TBD was actually all city streets. And we implement, we added an annual pavement maintenance project to both our transportation improvement program and our capital facilities program in order to meet the requirements to use the funding. However, we did have this map as, as part of our informational. But I guess informational information, that doesn't make any sense. But it's part of what we went to the voters with when we were providing facts. This is really, you know, when I came here in 2016. And I saw this map, I, if I'm being completely honest, I thought that it was a little bit silly and unattainable. With the funding levels that we had. And as you'll see, when I do a couple more things here, I was, I was wrong. So now you see everywhere that's covered in green. So I'll go back again. Everything that's covered in green is what we've completed to date. So we, as you can see, we have nearly covered everything. There's not very much red and yellow there. Now I'll go one more slide and this is going to show what's going to be included in the paper. This summer, along with a few other projects that are actively being designed and will happen regardless of renewal. More or less yellow and red now. And now, so what is left in yellow and red? Right now, we do not plan on completing with TBD funding. And the reason is, there's actually very good reasons. I have them on the screen there. The largest portion is actually a requirement of a large development that is occurring right now. So we don't have to do that segment. The development does. There is one that we are going to do, but it's awaiting completion of significant development. So we're not going to do the work while they're coming in and cutting patches in the road and things like that. So we're going to wait until after, but we do have the funds here marked for it. Two of the segments, we ultimately have decided were misrated. And, and what was put together with our Street Saver Program back in 2014. And so as we evaluated them, because every one of the streets that we plan on doing, we go out, boots on the ground, look at it, walk the whole length and determine if it needs to be done, if it's a good use of city dollars. And, and whether or not it makes sense compared to other priorities. So two of these roads really did not need to be done. So those got taken off the list. And then one of them, it, you know, we just determined that there wasn't enough benefit for the large expense. There's concrete panels underneath that segment and very little use by Tumwater residents. And it's a very small segment for, for the amount of cost that it was, it just didn't make sense at this time. And then lastly, two of them are waiting for city utility projects to be completed. So we're not going to go in and do the work and then have our utility project in a couple of years tear it up and have to repave it again. So sometimes we just live with, with roads that aren't great for a little bit, just to, for the greater good and to save money. And I can see your hand, Councilmember Dolph.
Thanks, Brandon. How do you manage expectations for how we prioritize and rank and have a hierarchy? Versus those who are actually living in those areas and are potentially impacted in a negative way? How do you balance that? How do you answer those requests?
So the, the, the big answer is, is that the majority of the roads that we select is actually generated from our pavement maintenance program. Specifically, we have software called Street Saver. And in that we do pavement ratings, citywide pavement ratings every couple of years, we input the data. And that software essentially puts out, this is the order that you should do the work and the type of work that you should do. In order to have the greatest cost benefit. That's, that's step one. That generates our initial list. Then we go through it and we kind of vet it out. We, we look at the roads, we go check them out, we see if it makes sense. We see if it's something that could go away. We do also log complaints that we get or requests that we get from the general public. And if there is, if there is enough, they usually rank pretty high. I think if I were to be honest with you, the one, the one that has been asked for multiple times is Anson Street. And the only reason we haven't completed work on Anson Street is it's one of the ones that we are waiting for a utility project to be complete. But otherwise, yeah, we are, we are noting where there's complaints. You know, because our department also includes streets operations. We really know where the problems are. We, we know a lot of where the complaints are because we log them in our system, we take the calls. So it's multi-pronged, but the, the base always starts with what the program tells us because that's the responsible thing to do. And then we correct it.
Perfect. Thanks, Brandon.
Yeah. Can see Councilmember Swarthout.
Thank you, Brandon. I appreciate where, as far as, I remember in preparing for a TRPC meeting. I believe it was on the high capacity or the one we were talking about. Emergency routes, but anyway, how Tumwater did come, our roads were rated poor. And I was surprised by that because I thought with all the work that we had done. So I wasn't sure which roads they were really, which ones they were really taking into account. That would be the ones that were really in poor condition as far as like trying to get the, you know, if we. Trying to get people off of I five or what was, I mean, how did we end up in that? I just thought we were doing quite better than that.
So if this is the one, did you say that it was several years ago?
No, we just, we were working on a report just recently that we were preparing for with TRPC. And so just in the last couple of weeks or yeah, a couple of months that we had a report that we were, it had come out. And, and it rated our roads, the Tumwater roads as being poor. And I was, it had a comparison with the other jurisdictions. And I was kind of, again, I was surprised with all the work that's been done. So I wasn't, and I apologize for not having my facts here before I start to speak. But I, I just, I wonder what, what ones they were taking into account. Is it like all of our roads or if it was specifically, if I'm misremembering that it had to do with the high capacity one?
I see Mark Daly's hand.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you for saving me, Mark.
Yeah, I, I, that was not in relation to pavement condition. Not, that wasn't, not what we're, what we're talking about here.
So what I was going to say, if I asked if that was several years ago, is that TRPC did collect data several years ago. It was back when I was the transportation manager. And I actually generated the data and provided it, provided it. And I think that we were probably mid-pack for, for what was submitted. And ultimately they were also asking, what is, what is the level of funding that you would need to maintain your system at its current state? And I think at that time, we were, we had a significant gap between the funding that we had, even with the TBD. And what we need to maintain our system in its current state. And that, I'll go back a couple of slides. That was really here is what I was talking about. So back when they asked for the data, it was in this period of time. Our system was still degrading at, at what's a fairly rapid rate. And this is where we've really seen strides. And, and so that's, that's where I thought you were going. But, but thank you, Mr. Daly, for stepping in because I would have been talking about the wrong thing.
Well, and also I'll, I'll just add that all the data that we use for pavement condition is the data that we get from the jurisdiction. So that, but it should always be in alignment.
And I'm not certain if we give the data every time that we do a pavement evaluation. So I can check with TRPC staff on that. I imagine, I imagine that either we or our GIS folks can get it in a, in a form that they can use. Or maybe we can just wait till they ask for it. But at any rate, what I, what I, the main message here is that, you know, once again, we can honestly say that, you know, we, we said that we were going to do something and we did it. So, and quite frankly, just even touching on the last slide. There, there's our staff actually that are involved with these and involved with the program and involved with the construction. They're all very proud of, of what we've been able to do all these years. It's completely changed the program. So that there's definitely a lot of pride down in the basement. And so back to a slide where we had this last week as well. I'm just going to touch on it here again, real quick, in case there's any new viewers or anybody who didn't see it. So we've, we've been able to complete over 100 lane miles of road improvements, which is. It's greater than 40% of our entire system. So just to think about that, that's, that's a lot of work. And that's included over 50,000 tons of asphalt. I still didn't, did not collect the data for quantity of chip seal, but it, it is a significant amount as well. We have reconstructed more than 100 curb ramps. And that's great for accessibility, for, for all users' safety. So it's been a, it's been a good success. And then there's been over 38,000 feet of pavement markings as part of the projects. And something I do want to point out is those figures don't include the four projects that you see on the screen. So once those are complete, we can add that to the data. So those, those numbers are going to go up. So next week, I'm going to be bringing forward Resolution Number R 2025-001. Much of the language is the same as what it was back in 2015. On the Resolution 2015 slash, I don't know the number off the top of my head. There, there is one notable change to the language in the resolution and I'll touch on that in the next slide. But the resolution ultimately provides for a ballot measure to be submitted on the April 22, 2025 election. And it is set up just for, for renewing the current 0.2% sales tax for the TBD. So there is no change to sales tax in Tumwater. And renewal does require an affirmative vote. So here's the language that we are proposing, or here's some, oh, I can see Councilmember Jefferson is. And, and one other person who I can't view. Oh, now I see Councilmember Dolph too.
Um, yes, Brandon. I talked about this at the State of the City Panel last week where I attended for our mayor. And I mentioned this as a positive. The investment has paid off, as you can see from your slides tremendously. And you know, taxes and sales taxes are a sore topic for, for a lot of people, you know? Taxes are going up. So I was happy to mention that this is one sales tax that I am happy to pay. Because where I am from in Belize, you won't believe the type of road conditions that we have. Just potholes everywhere. There's no investment in transportation. So that's a good thing and, and I definitely support that. We're doing great work with this. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you. I agree. Thank you.
Brandon, can you remind me, because I can never remember, this just requires a simple majority, not a super majority?
Correct. It's just simple.
Thank you so much.
Um, alright, um, so I, I do notice I've got two little prompts if anybody raises their hand. So thank you for using the button. I'm actually able to see him this time. It seems like the first time ever in a presentation. Um, and so here, here's the request, or here's what we're planning on. Oh.
I was slow to find the hand button. I clicked the wrong thing. Um. So the reason why we do sales tax, and I think you mentioned this in the, not this presentation, but the former one. So correct me if this is wrong, like we have the option of doing car tabs, which is what Olympia does, but we deploy the sales tax because that way, when people who don't necessarily live in Tumwater, but they commute into Tumwater to go to Costco, go to Fred Meyer or whatever um, retailer where they're buying non-grocery based items that are subject to the sales tax. That way, when they use the roads to commute here, they also have skin in the game. Is, is that sort of the policy rationale for why we chose that?
That is correct and you, and you're kind of stealing the thunder from what I think is the next slide, but it is just, it is just another wash, rinse, repeat slide, so.
Okay, sorry.
No, no, you're good. I won't have to talk as much. Um. Okay, so uh, so again, uh, we, next, next week, we will have to hold a public hearing. We, we were not going to have to hold a public hearing for uh, just the resolution, but because we are proposing to um, change the language to increase uh, eligibility for certain projects, we will have a public hearing. And um, it's actually a really good one. You know, we, we are um, attempting to add um, standalone sidewalk projects. Um, and ultimately any work that's in our ADA transition plan as eligible projects so that they would not have to be a component of our annual pavement maintenance projects. Um, and really, it, really the rationale here is it's a lot easier to get grant funding or other sources of funding for large capacity projects. Um, than it is to get the sidewalk program. It, it does seem sort of counterintuitive because there are a lot of grant sources out there um, for multimodal improvements, but the, the difference is, is that most of those are much smaller dollar numbers. And then when you spread it throughout the city, doing a curb ramp here and a curb ramp there, um, it, you, you go through the funding pretty quickly. Um. And so ultimately, um, this particular work would come of, out of our sidewalk program, which is informed by our ADA transition plan. And I think right now we have about two hundred thousand dollars a year dedicated to that work already. And we would like to increase that um, in, in some way. And that's why we're trying to add um, essentially the sidewalk program as eligible projects. And, and another good thing with that is that if we can get our sidewalk program to be more robust and going, it is gonna open us up to other um, not just grants, but revenue sources. Um, so it's, it's something that we really want to get going on because like every other agency who has completed an ADA transition plan, it's about a ninety-nine year process to get through it. And we would like to make it a little bit shorter. Or, or a lot of it shorter. Um. Let's see. So on this slide, um, I do have a lot of information about the types of projects that we would be undertaking. I'm gonna try to go through this quickly because it's, it's just so much. Um, ultimately, what the projects that we are gonna ta- undertake is any city street in Tumwater. Um, and what that means, I talked about it on uh, s- slides a, a little bit back. It doesn't mean that we're gonna do work on every street, but every street is eligible. Um, and we do that because we can sit and try to plan every single road that we're gonna work on for the full ten years, but the simple truth is, is that pavement management, the, the software that we use, it, it is a useful tool, but a lot of it is just guesswork. Um, you, you know, we're, we're assuming that all road condition, all roads are, all streets are gonna degrade at the same rate, but there's environmental conditions, different levels of traffic. Um, construction quality could be different from one street to the next. So we might assume that one street, you know, on year eight is definitely gonna need to be redone, but it may be perfectly fine. So we try to provide the flexibility and what we do is every year that we're doing a project, we come to y'all. We present what we're proposing and y'all get to say yea or nay. Um, so that's the way that we sort of have the checks and balances and make sure that we can utilize all the funds because we don't wanna sit on the funds. It, and we're not gonna use the funds just because we have them on roads that don't need work. Um. So typical project types are gonna be our annual pavement maintenance project. Um, we do use TBD funding for large capital projects where there is already a need for pavement maintenance. So i- if we can, as an example, when we start working on the old Highway ninety-nine corridor, well, specifically at the seventy-ninth Avenue Roundabout. Um, when, you know, shortly before the ops facility is constructed. Some of that work is TBD eligible because we did not complete the work when we did the large paver. So the TBD would fund um, just the overlay portion of that project. And then, again, like we just discussed, we are also gonna add in standalone sidewalk projects if renewal um, is successful. And I think, again, that's just gonna be a great um, improvement to the program. Priority areas um, for the pavement side, for the pavement maintenance side, um, we're really gonna hit residential streets pretty hard this next ten years. Um, it, it typically residential streets don't rank very high in a pavement maintenance program because they're so expensive um, compared to the long corridors. Um, where you just have more HMA to do, it requires less work. Um, however, we've, we've got, just like we had them on the arterials and collectors, we have a few locations on residential streets that are just no longer acceptable. And so we're gonna take care of those. Um, that's also gonna help our sidewalk program because there's always a ton of curb ramps in those areas. Um, we're gonna look at roadway repairs and sealing for future overlays. So even if we're not gonna be able to complete a road segment within the next ten years, we would wanna be, we would want it to be prepared so that we can do fairly low cost um, pavement maintenance in the future. We're still gonna hit some of our very poor roads again. And I already mentioned Anson Street. That one's been terrible for me to see because it is pretty bad, but we've got a sewer utility project there. Um, and for the last few years, we have had some requests and it's just been tough because we don't wanna repave it and then tear it up one or two years later. Um, and so, you know, if, if renewal occurs, I'm gonna be excited to get that one completed. Um, and then we will look at, we will continue to look at our arterials and collectors. Um, and the main reason that those usually rank high is because if you let them go, you're gonna destroy your budget for pavement maintenance. You gotta stay on top of them. And so any of our large corridors that were paved, you know, around twenty years ago, we're gonna be looking at those, like Little Rock Road. Um, Little Rock Road doesn't seem like it's that old of a road. But if you drive it and you're really looking at the pavement, it's starting to go south already. And so we need to get on uh, corridors like that. You gotta stay on top of them or else we're gonna run out of funds. Uh, Councilmember Dolph?
Thanks, Brandon. Speaking of Little Rock Road, where, with all of this work, where do, when you get potholes or all of a sudden there's like a hole in the road and you fill it with your car, where does that fit into all of this? Like, what does someone do if it's just not the whole road, but like a pocket?
So we have um, on our website, we have, it's part of our inquiry or complaint side. You, you go into there and it gets forwarded to our transportation operations manager. Um, y- you can call as well and um, we'll get, we have in-house patch crew. So we'll get out there, we'll take care of it. Um, it's, it's typically not gonna be to a permanent condition. We'll repair it and we'll maintain it until it makes it into the paver list.
Thank you.
Um, so for the pedestrian improvements, um, ultimately, the, the ranking or the priorities are gonna be based on the ADA transition plan, which feeds into the sidewalk program. Um, and the ADA transition plan has specific criteria. Some of them are gonna be special requests from the public. Um, location, condition, priority ranking, depending on what, what is around. Um, so if there is um, like, like a larger elderly population in a certain region, it does get more of a ranking. If there is any type of medical facility or school facility in, in a particular area, its ranking goes up. There's, there's several criteria. Um, and that's what feeds, feeds the program. Um, we're also gonna focus on any, anytime that we have a large project or any project, we're gonna, even if the limits are A to B, we're gonna look outside of that for anything that, you know, it might make sense to take care of this while we're here. And so that's another area where that work gets prioritized. So uh, here it is, Councilmember Altoszer. Uh, same, same slide as last time. I think I cut the picture away though, so I could make the letters bigger. Um, these, these are two very important points, um, and that is the zero point two percent portion of the current sales tax. It ensures that all people who come to Tumwater and shop in Tumwater are paying their fair share, not just the folks who live in Tumwater. Um, and that's the right way to do it, because everybody's getting a, a benefit of the city or of the system. Um, so everybody should, should pay a portion. Um, and then the other key point is, this is not a sales tax increase. It is a renewal of the current zero point two percent portion of the sales tax. There will be no change in the sales tax rate in Tumwater with, with this action or with this renewal. So here is the slide for the why. Um, I could, I could make several slides on this. These are just some of the ones that, that I wanted to highlight really quick. Um, you know, thi- this method of funding pavement and sidewalks maintenance, it, it spreads the cost to all users, like I just said, not just Tumwater residents. Um, maintains the current rate. Um, the point two percent adds up to twenty cents on every hundred dollars in taxable purchases. So if you go to the store and you spend two hundred dollars, it doesn't mean you're gonna spend forty cents in the TBD. It's only the sales taxable portion. Any, all your groceries, anything like that. Um, it does not, does not count. Um, a- another point is, is because of the TBD sales tax option, um, the city has uh, secured over twenty-five million dollars, either in TBD funds or in grant revenue. So that's twenty-five million dollars we wouldn't have before. We would have been able to save up about two million dollars in that time span with the, the rate that we were in the past. Um, for the next ten years, if this, if the um, renewal passes, we're projecting a little over thirty-five million dollars in revenue. Um, that's uh, based on uh, sales growth in Tumwater. And if, if we can get more staff, which is, it's really hard to get engineers these days. Um, there's usually more vacancies than there are actual people in positions at most agencies right now, but um, once we can get staffed up, we're gonna hit grants hard again. If we can, we can catch up on other projects, um, then we're just gonna continue to try to get grant funding. Um, we can use the money to leverage multimodal and capacity grants. So I guess I just touched on that, but um, those are the type of grants we would be pursuing. Um, the, the sort of silly graphic with the emojis. Um, sorry if you hear uh, like, I got kids yelling in the background in, in another room, but um. So the, the slide that had the silly emojis, um, at the end, the red, the red line, you know, I can use the, the uh, cliff saying as well, but that's, I'll call it the pavement management cliff. Um, it helps keep us from landing there.
That was an excellent slide, by the way. So I disagree with your title for it. I loved that slide. It was, it was good.
Um, let's see, so where's the first or maybe second? What I'm saying there is, we, we either were the worst rated pavement condition out of Tumwater, Lacey, Olympia and Thurston County before we had this. Um, and then now we're probably second. It's a stretch to say we're first because Lacey's got pretty good roads. Um, but, but you know, I will say that they've got the unfair advantage of being a really young city comparatively. Um, and then they've got a lot more um, revenue uh, for their roads. And then another um, aspect that's um, maybe not known very well is that it does incre- increase staff project utilization. Uh, so all the staff in our department, um, the pavement maintenance projects are ones that you can typically start work on and then shelf. Focus on other projects, come back to it when you have time. So all those little gaps that you have where you can't really start a major project, we jump onto the paper. We'll work on that. We'll even sometimes be a couple of years out. If we've got time, we're working on the pavement manu- maintenance project, which cuts out uh, a good portion of our general fund hit in the department, opening up those funds for other priorities. Okay, so uh, I had this one. I'm almost done. I, I swear, so don't worry. But um, I had this slide uh, in the last presentation as well. I have updated it. Um, so these are just some of the major steps to get through renewal. Um. Let's see, I will be at next week's uh, city council meeting uh, to bring forward the resolution. And uh, there will be a public hearing as well, like we discussed. After that, um, y'all are gonna have to decide if you want to um, solicit for uh, supporting or opposing committees. Um, there's two options, either, either we as a city, um, y- you um, select supporting and opposing committees for the ballot, um, or the county will select them for us. Um, and in the last round, um, the city council did the selection, so I imagine it'll be the same, but it is up to you. If, if we do go with that, um, we're gonna have to come up with a process to um, solicit those folks quickly because there's not a lot of time to turn around um, and get everything to elections. Let's see, um, and of course, there is the election on April twenty-two. Um, so those are just a few of them. Um, and I'm sure I'll talk about some more as I come forward with future discussions and Councilmember Dolph.
Thanks, Brandon. I don't know if this is really a Brandon question, maybe for um, Debbie or Lisa. Do we know if there's anything else projected to be on the ballot or is this gonna be a special ballot, which would cost the city more?
I don't know that we know the answer to that question yet, um, Councilmember, um, largely because you know, the same timeline that we have is the timeline that other jurisdictions would have. I can um, see if I can reach out. I, I don't know of anything specifically from the other cities, at least city of Lacey, city of Olympia. Um, but I can see if I can reach out to the auditor's office and see if they might have some idea, but um, I don't know that we're gonna know that, does um, the answer to that?
Yeah.
I do, I do, I'm not sure how much more expensive it will be, you know, the, these ballots only go out to people in the city limits. Um, uh, which is the area that, or maybe it's the, whatever the actual area to be covered by the sales tax is, so.
I know like in the past, now I could be making up this number. What I know, like in the past, it was like a hundred thousand dollars, but so, right, so just like it'd be interesting to know the cost, like if there's something else. Not important imperative for me to know, but just curious.
We can look into that and um, and actually for budgeting purposes, and um, I believe this is um, um. I believe this is what we did with our budget is, we anticipated that um, the TBD will actually pay for this election. So the money, the money that's currently collected as part of the TBD will actually pay the costs of the election.
Right, and I'm al- I'm also thinking about just the turnout for an April, but since we don't need a super majority, I am more confident, so thank you.
You bet.
And so um, if, if it is eligible for TBD funding, um, then we'll definitely go that route. Even if we look into it, you know, I'll check with Karen and it's not, we would use um, the the actual transportation CFP, small little bit of money that is earmarked towards pavement maintenance projects, so we would cover it. And just to give you an idea of, of the reason why it's, seems like it's a no-brainer to me, but it, it, it may not be. Um, is that we are, we're getting over two million dollars a year in um, TBD sales tax, so it's a big deal. Um, and then uh, that's all I have for tonight. Um, so if there's any questions, uh, try to answer and I'm gonna end this slideshow before I forget.
Any, any questions? I think we had a lot of robust questions while we were doing the presentations.
Yeah.
Alright, well, great. So we will have the public hearing on this next, on next Tuesday. So, great. Thank you, Brad, Brandon. Brad, Brandon, this is what happens when you have Brad and Brandon at the same meeting, right?
I totally get it. It actually happens quite often because we speak next to each other a bit.
Yeah. Alright, so the next item is the twenty twenty-five city council meeting schedule and summer recess. So town uh, Administrator Parks.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mayor. Um, this is just a quick check-in um, and request for guidance from the council about your schedule for twenty twenty-five. Um, uh, you know that your council rules establish that you are, um, you take a two-week recess during August. It doesn't specify the two weeks uh, that are to be um, taken. Uh, but we wanted, before we set- Uh, but we wanted, before we set that timeline, we wanted to talk with you about what your preference is and. Um, uh, show you what some of the options might be, so let me see if I can pull this up. And.
And and I just might make mention, in the past, we did it so that the August recess would have the three weeks. Uh, and so norm typically, it was at the second half of August, but in the last couple of years, it's been the first half of August.
Yeah, and I think, you know, uh, one of the things that struck me about this is, um, last year, we found ourselves in a position where. We were packing a whole bunch of decisions into a couple of different meetings. We had to ask you to take some action at council work sessions. Largely because this is right in the thick of construction season, and so we, there were some things that we needed to decide that we were having. Um, that we ran into some scheduling issues, and there were a whole bunch of scheduling issues this last year with. You know, AWC and where Fourth of July fell, and um, so I I'm I'm not anticipating any, you know, major issues. I just wanted to um take an opportunity to talk with you about this, so. Uh, essentially, the the big question is really when, when to take that August recess, so. Um, I've, what I've done here is, um, you can see July, August and September, I hope, you could see the the uh um. Presentation, um, council meetings are in blue, uh, those are the business meetings where we take action, work sessions are in red. Um, and because July this year does have five Tuesdays. If we were to take Tuesday, the fifth of August, and Tuesday, the twelfth of August, have your recess at the beginning of the meeting, you would have three full weeks. But that also means that there would be five weeks between um. Uh, Tuesday, July fifteenth, which is a business meeting, and Tuesday, September second. Excuse me, excuse me, Tuesday, September ni- or August nineteenth. So there would be a full five weeks between our business meetings, if you were to take the first two weeks of August off. If you take the first, the the last two weeks, you would have the um, uh, the extra week in July, that's regardless of your time off. But then there would be um, still be four weeks off uh between this business meetings. Which would be from August fifth to September um second. Believe that's right. No, there would just be the, yes, there would be, so if you had, I'm sorry, okay. If you took the two, first two weeks of August off, there would be five weeks between business meetings. You would have three weeks off of meetings, so you would not meet on July twenty ninth, August fifth, or August twelfth. So we might have to ask you to take action on things on the twenty second to get them done before you're gone. Um, however, if you take the second two weeks of August off, there will be two weeks off of meetings, August nineteenth and twenty sixth. And there would be four weeks between business meetings, um, and that would be between August fifth and September second. So, you know, either is doable, either is fine, we just wanna know where to put the red and blue um. Uh, circles in August, if you have a preference or not.
Councilmember Kathy?
I have a preference, um, we've always done it where we have the fifth, the fifth Tuesday. And in the first thing that you sent out, uh, that's exactly what it is. The second one is. So, I'm I'm for the way that you put it, it, all of the dates that you listed in what you sent us. Um, I say yes to everything you put together.
Yeah, which is the first two weeks of August then.
Mm-hmm, yes. And the, and the eleventh, what was the eleventh about?
Uh, there's nothing on the eleventh. If you, we were to do this, we would basically, um, the fifth and the twelfth would be off.
No, the eleventh of November.
Oh, the eleventh of November is the, is the general, uh, I don't know if it's the eleven, there. You always meet on Tuesday, the gen- of the general election, and so the the Monday before that is always your. No, the eleventh is Veterans Day, correct?
Oh, okay. And that's on the.
I was, I was so focused on the August recess, I didn't.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was just wanting, I was just wanting to make the statement that every way that you put this. On the the note that you sent out, I'm fine with the way you did it.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Dahlhoff, did you have some thoughts?
My vote is for the first two weeks off, not because my birthday is within those first two weeks. But I just think it's good to take the first two weeks off.
Okay.
Well, we're not having a party.
Yeah, and and honestly, it was, you know, I I know, um, there were some questions, I thought, last year when we took the uh the time off, and I just wanted to, it's like. It's your schedule, so let's review it um before we finalize it and and see if there's any thoughts that you have.
I prefer option one, city administrator. Option one was your first one that you just.
Okay, thank you.
I I was gonna propose canceling the recess this year, just so we could be doing the people's business year round.
Good day, sir, good day.
Hey, but, you know, I I, hearing the the pleas of my colleagues for having it the first two weeks of August. All I will um gladly also uh throw my hat into that camp, um.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think I, I think that means we'll take the fifth through the twelfth off uh of August, so we'll, we'll, we'll finalize this. Um, it'll actually, I, it may even be a consent item uh on the calendar, but we'll, we'll get this figured out and finalized. And thank you for your patience in talking about it. I just, um, I just felt like it was your, your calendar, you should have. Um, uh, the opportunity to tell us what your preferences are, so, there you go.
You did that, so if we complain about anything, you can say, well, you chose it.
And it is on video.
Yeah, I can prove it.
Any other questions? All right, with that, we go to Mayor's city administrative report, and I will start out with Administrator Parks.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So just a couple of quick things, um, TYP is going strong this winter. Excuse me, um, January seventeenth, this Friday is the next one. It's at Bush Middle School from seven to ten. Sounds like they're gonna have a dodgeball tournament. Which sounds dangerous to me, but.
It is dangerous.
I'm kind of a little funny dudie these days, I guess. Um, there was a community center workshop last night. It sounds like it went really well. We are gonna be doing a council update on that project. Excuse me, on January twenty eighth, at your work session. So that'll be um very informative. I'm looking forward to that. And then, um, just a note for everybody, that City Hall is closed on this coming Monday in, excuse me. In observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day, so I'm all done, since I am having a coughing fit, so over to you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, um, and I wanna give a shout out to Councilmember Jefferson. Thank you for covering the chamber meeting. I woke up that morning, um, I had been fighting this thing that's going around and. Said there is no way I'm going to make it, so I really appreciate you filling in and set short notice, because that was like two hours, three hours? Yeah, it was, by the time we got all to you, it was one hour. Thank you so much. I appreciate that, so, um. Uh, so with that, uh, we will have our council meeting. We are off on Monday. And I believe that there are several great events going on in celebration of Martin Luther King. So, um, please go ahead and attend those. And with that, I believe we are adjourned, so thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.